Okay, welcome to the City of Taft Planning Commission Regular Meeting Wednesday, September 6th at 2023, pardon me, in 2023, City Hall Council Chamber. City of Plas- Planning Commission meeting are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at https://www.youtube.com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft, all one word. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. And public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation, so please rise.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have John Geddy here to do the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for the privilege to be together. God, we just thank you for those that have gathered here tonight and just pray that you would bless this commission, that you would bless their decisions and the work that they do. God, continue to move and work in this great city, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
Well, I see that we have a seating of a newly appointed planning commissioner, but since Ron isn't here, I'm assuming we're going to move on to calling the role.
Yes, we are. Soon as I find my role. Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Livingston?
Here.
And Commissioner Shirts?
Here.
Okay, well, item two is select your chairperson, and that is turned over to the City Clerk.
Yes, we'll now receive nominations for the appointment of the chairman position.
I would like to do it.
I nominate Jerry.
Thank you.
Second. I can do that, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Livingston, you are now chairman, Livingston.
Okay, then we will move on to item number three, which is selection of a vice chair. It's a good opportunity to have an opportunity to learn to do some of the chair's job on I honestly don't know how available Ron is going to be in the near future, so if there's someone who would like to make a motion for a vice chairperson, please do so.
Yeah, I nominate Dennis.
Okay.
He seems interested.
I second that.
Thank you.
Is it okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other nominations from the floor? Okay, over to you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on up.
Okay, so we are now moving on to item number four, which is reorganization of the Planning Commission Committee assignments. I believe we only have two committees that we actually have assignments to, is that correct?
Correct.
One would be the Economic Development Committee, which is now a permanent committee.
Yes.
Okay. And the other is, I believe, the Traffic Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Currently, I know I am on the Economic Development Committee. There is a second person who I'm not sure if that was...
It was Mr. Lykum.
It was Mr. Lykum?
Yes.
And then we had, I believe, an alternate for that one as well.
Which was Mr. Dowden.
Okay. So, is there, I would prefer to continue to stay on that committee, but there is at least, if that's okay with you folks, and then if there's somebody here who would like to step in and...
I could step in on that one.
Give me a second.
Yeah, you do the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. Have any problem with that?
No.
Okay, so...
I missed alternate.
So, the alternate is going to be Dennis Shirts.
Okay. I got it now.
Moving on up.
And the Traffic Committee, which doesn't meet as often, it seems like, who is the current appointee?
Mr. Johnson.
Would you like to continue in that?
Yes.
Any problems with that, folks?
Nope.
Okay, so then I think we're all in favor of having her continue in that position.
Okay.
It's just a single seat, no alternates?
Yes.
And I believe there are no alternates in that one.
Right.
Okay. So that's the complete reorganization of the Planning Commission.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, not like the City Council. They have pages of it. Okay, so the citizens' request for public comments is up. We have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to the minutes of the meeting. I need a motion to approve.
All motion.
Second.
Okay, and then we'll need a voice vote for approval. And everybody was here, so it's no big deal.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shirts?
Yes.
And Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay, so we are now moving on to item seven, which is a public hearing for time extension number two, 2023-11, for a two-year extension of approved conditional use permit number 2019-23 for a new utility-scale solar voltaic energy generation facility. Are anything in particular we need to...
Well, I'll go through the history of the project for our new commissioner, so everybody knows what's happening here. So, as you mentioned, Chair Chairman, the item before you is a time extension for a prior approved project. On August 19th, 2020, Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2020-11 approving conditional use permit number 2019-23 to develop a solar photovoltaic energy generation facility of up to eight megawatts, a power conversion system, and battery energy storage system on 58 acres located on private land within the industrial and general commercial zone districts, east of Airport Road, south of East Ash Street, and west of Gas Company Road. The proposed project is located on vacant property that wraps around the north and east sides of Taft's wastewater treatment plant. The approval for the conditional use permit provided for a one-year period to start work on the project. The applicant has been in regular contact with the city and working on the plans and construction drawings needed for the permit plan check. However, they have not submitted the plans or will not submit plans until they've cleared the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's requirements for the incidental take permit because they did a whole bio review for the original approval, and they need that to clear and before they could even grade the property, so.
Right.
Apex Energy submitted a time extension application letter specifying their request on November 8th, 2022. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution granting a two-year extension for that which expired in '23 with all the conditions approved in full force and effect. They have subsequently submitted another, this current time, extension application on July 26th, 2023 for a similar two-year extension of time on the approval resolution, which gives them until August of 2025 with all conditions of approval in full force and effect. And the applicant anticipates being able to require that ITP from the state, but I'm unsure if it would be before next August, which would only be a one-year extension, resulting in why they're requesting the two-year, so they don't have to come back for it. So, and if that, the secret determination, they still have a valid mitigated negative declaration that was accepted in 2020. That's what they're working off of and working with Fish and Wildlife. Fish and Wildlife has contacted me as well for the approval resolutions that they've acquired, so things are starting to move forward, and that's why they're here today. We have both, two of the folks with Apex Energy that could answer any questions you may have, but I'll open myself for some questions before we open the public hearing and speak with them.
Do you have any questions for Mark?
No, not, I'd like to listen to what the others say.
Well, the only thing I figure is, is that the Fish and Wildlife Service is moving with its usual speed?
Yes.
Okay.
This was not 10 years later, they held up Colston.
Yeah. I can remember when this actually came to us, so.
Right.
Unless you guys have any questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Yeah, it's not new for me, so I'm familiar with the project.
Okay. So in that case, I'm opening the public hearing. Anybody who would wish to speak on this item needs to do so, either come up to the stand or otherwise I will be closing the public hearing, so.
And we have Sarah and Herb on the line.
Right. Do either of them feel that they need to speak to this issue?
We are just available for questions.
Yep. Okay, just there for questions.
I have no questions.
No questions for them?
Yeah. What's the biggest, hey, is it going to be the Fish and Wildlife? That's your biggest hangup currently?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
No problem, sir. So currently, the biggest hangup is going to be the Fish and Wildlife?
That is correct, yeah. We have communication with them in April, and they're stating that they are pretty backlog, and that's the only communication that we have with them at this time.
Time to, time completion and once you get approval?
It's about a nine to 12 month process.
Is there anything else we could do to help?
Let you know somebody has seen DFW. I think that's the, that's the only herd that we have so far.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go make sure there's no fish.
Make sure there's no fish. Just the brown trout.
Yes, exactly. Okay, in that case, unless there's any other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would need a motion, and for your benefit, I don't know if we talked about it last time, the motion needs to be all of item two, and I think in this case, we also need to have item three.
Yes, recent activities in other cities is required, both two and three to be read all out.
Let me read that.
So if you want to do that as a motion to...
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft approving the extension, time extension, number 2023-11, the extension that adopts the resolution of number 2020-11 and approval of conditional use permit number 2019-23 to develop an up to eight megawatt alternating current megawatt crystalline solar photovoltaic energy generation facility, power conversion system, PCS, the battery energy storage system, BESS, and on a 58.25 acre, in the industrial and general commercial zone district located east of Airport Road, south and east of Ash Street, and west of Gas Company Road, on the additional two-year to August 19th, 2025. Number three also?
Yes.
Find that a notice determination was filed with the Gurren County Clerk on September 22nd, 2020, for the mitigation negative declaration. What's the whole numbers?
You could skip that, yeah.
Thanks. Which represents the city's independent judgment and analysis that this proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment with the implication of my...
Mitigation.
Mitigation measures.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Shirts?
Yes.
And Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay, that moves us to the next item on our agenda, item number eight.
And my, and my muted.
Bill, if you could mute your computer, sign into Zoom, and that should clear the feedback.
Hey, I know that song.
We'll hear you through your phone.
Hello, this is Bill Schroder.
So, yeah, Bill, if you could hit mute on your computers Zoom. There you go. And I think we're good now.
Okay, now we just got the phone.
And I think we're good, we hear you loud and clear, Bill. Oh, you're going to have to listen to your phone to hear us, then.
Yeah, I put it back on speaker.
Okay.
Okay. So we're ready for agenda item number eight, Mr. Planning Director?
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. As you mentioned, item eight today is for site plan review, numbers 2023-08 and conditional use permit 2023-09. The applicant FIDC 180 LLC and Coca Development is proposing a 32,545 square foot tenant improvement to an existing 91,500 square foot former Kmart into a new Tractor Supply Company retail store within the general commercial zone district at 301 Gardner Field Road. The proposed project is located on the southern end of a primarily developed 18-acre Taft Highway Plaza Shopping Center. The existing surrounding land uses include vacant and commercially developed portions of the shopping center to the north, Highway 33 and 119, and vacant commercial zone property to the west, vacant industrial zone property to the south, and vacant industrial zone property to the east across Enterprise Way. The proposed project seeks to improve 32,545 square feet of the existing retail building for the new Tractor Supply Company store, approximately 3,698 square feet of an existing garden center building, approximately 9,060 square feet of an existing outdoor display of the garden center product. Tractor Supply Company is proposing additional outdoor display of product of approximately 2,070 square feet along the front entry sidewalk area, and approximately taking up 15 parking spaces or about 3,000 square feet of, I didn't write that well, I apologize, of parking spaces out in front of the store in the existing parking area. The front sidewalk display area is required to maintain an ADA compliant accessible path of travel from the front entry door northward along the sidewalk to the other tenant spaces in the shopping center. The tenant improvement will include cutting in a new front entrance along the western wall for the Tractor Supply Store while utilizing the existing entry to the garden center building. The other existing access ingress and egress points of the former Kmart store will be utilized between the building and outdoor fenced garden center space and the rear of the building, storage, and loading areas. A 24,000 square foot portion of the former Kmart building will not be part of this project and will remain vacant between the Tractor Supply Store and a grocery store that's currently under construction on the north end of the building. Although vacant, necessary access and ingress and egress stores will need to be cut in if necessary along the western, east walls consistent with California Building Code standards. The proposed architecture enhancements for the new store will be limited to the new entrance with a corrugated metal facade with gabled roofline and red trim. Tractor Supply will paint their featured red trim color along the three elevations of their store and garden center unit. The existing exterior walls will be patched and painted to match the existing masonry block walls. The Taft zoning ordinance in Chapter Four, Table 14A identifies general retail uses as required to provide one parking space for every 300 square feet of building area. Below on the staff report is a table that details how the proposed project is addressed to total parking and accessible parking requirements of the new Tractor Supply Store as there currently aren't handicap spaces at that south end. They're all up at the old main entrance of the Kmart building. The project has a condition approval in the attached resolution covering the parking required, but also repaving the lot as it's been some time since it has been treated with a new surface. And as I mentioned, the ADA accessible spaces shall be provided at the mount per store location and the nearest location to each store, as well something for the vacant space whenever that comes in. And an additional conditional approval includes the main access north-south drive aisle along the entrances of the shopping center to be repaired and repaved from the entrance off Gardner Field Road to the new paving for the Tractor Supply Store. Part of it was done when Burger King redid their store, their facade, paved their parking lot, so it's the outbound and the aisle past Dollar Tree and the other stores in the shopping center. The parking calculation below in the table as well excludes the Burger King site and 301 Gardner Field Road as it is not currently owned by the shopping center owner, and the restaurant satisfies its own parking requirements and is currently physically separated from the portion of the shopping center currently under review. Furthermore, a condition of approval has been placed on the project for the building plan to provide a plan that accurately depicts the existing as-built condition of the former Kmart, its garden center and outdoor garden center, and accurate layout of the vacant space left as a remainder separate from the Tractor Supply Store and grocery store under construction. One side note, that's not really part of this, is that Tractor Supply is looking to acquire the property separate from the rest of the shopping center, so there's going to be a property line that goes through the building. There's building code requirements where walls need to separate the units, so Kmart's going to be a multi-unit building now, so that's why I've brought that up in the staff report. And these updated accurate measurements of the Kmart store provide a current record for the city and current county assessor as we're going to have multiple units. So the parking requirement table is provided on page three of the staff report, and I gave both a one per 300 parking requirement for each unit, but there's an adjusted total in that if any shopping center has more than 100,000 square feet of building area, the square footage above the 100,000 is able to be parked at one space per 450 square feet. So that's why if you just took each of the tenants and did the one per 300, you get to 421 spaces, but since the total square footage gets to about 120-some-odd thousand, that 20,000 above could be at 450, so it drops it down to 389 total across the shopping center, and then you see the accessible parking requirements on the right. That's it for covering parking. Coca Development submitted their site plan review and conditional use permit application and plans June 13th of 2023. Planning Director issued an incomplete letter on June 27th, 2023 with a list of comments and corrections needed to consider the application complete. Coca resubmitted revised plans on August 8th with additional details and information as revised plan sufficiently addressed the development standards of the general commercial zone district. The proposed project was moved on to the Planning Commission for review and approval, and for the secret determination, the project is considered exempt from requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act as set in Section 15301 for existing facilities as a project occurs with an existing building and developed property. That concludes my staff report and presentation. I am open for any questions you may have, and then Mr. Schroder is on the line for any questions you may have for him during the public hearing.
So, I'm looking at the third, page A3, the Enterprise Way at the back where the loading is, is that going to be re-done as well?
No, the paving activity is the parking lot, the main parking lot out front between the highway and the, we'll call it Kmart building for now, and then the row of parking that runs along the backside.
Okay.
There is 30, 40 parking spaces that do line up along Enterprise Way that is going to be part of the Tractor Supply property, if you will.
Okay. I don't see anything in particular drawing my attention in terms of...
What's the planage for signage? Are the lights on the building itself, the change in the...
You know what, I apologize, I had...
I'd like to ask...
I had Mr. Schroder provide the facade, and it is not in what I provided to you.
I see on the plan.
Or wait, there is the one...
The facade is here, but it...
There you go, yeah, apologize, there it is. So what you see there in the top elevation, which is the west elevation, right now there is an access door kind of mid, full length of the wall.
Right.
But there being, if you're looking at the old Kmart to the right third of it, they're going to cut in double doors, sliding automated doors, and it's somewhat of an application, I'm sure Mr. Schroder can more accurately describe it, but to provide a more recognized entrance point for the building, and it's going to have, if you've seen a Tractor Supply before, they have a corrugated metal upper part with this gabled roof.
Right.
With their sign. The sign is reviewed and approved at a later date with a separate application, so they'll be subject to, it's a ratio to the width of the building and how much area they get for all the signage they may use on that side.
Thank you.
And lighting would be covered at that time, too, then?
Correct, they'll be making whatever changes they need to, to the lighting out there. When they've turned on all the parking lot, it seems like everything's still been functional since Kmart, but that's not a main thing that's included in the condition.
It's going to be a maintenance thing.
A question for you, because that lighting, of course, is on and off at all the wrong times. So are they going to separate that out?
Looks like they've recently upgraded a lot to LED.
Yes, so the, there's that. Their, part of the divisions is each is going to get their own electrical panel and it's tied into their own meters. And that's something that's happening with the grocery store that's working on the north end, has been working on their electrical setup. When Tractor Supply cars out there, third on the south end, they'll have to do the same and provide whatever connection point to P G N E for their meter location. So that's, and they have been processing a building permit concurrently, so they've gone through one round of review in the background based on the general layout of what they've done here for tonight's meeting. But that's what they'll have to provide, and then the middle tenant space will have to do the same when they find whoever would occupy that.
Okay, and when you say they're redoing the paving, this says existing pavement to remain and be prepared as required, so they're basically the patch job with a cover or?
So that's other ends in better shape, I'll put it that way, because it's had less traffic, less trucks, all that. So they are doing a surface treatment and restriping, putting the handicap and all that. And then the drive aisle from their area to the north, the Gardner Field Road, because we've all, if we've shopped there, experienced the larger holes that are between Dollar Tree and the entrance.
Yes.
That are in significant need of greater repair than some of the patching they've been doing.
Okay.
So, or at least finishing with a solid surface after they patched the hole. So with the traffic, that definitely would be increased coming to the south end. That drive aisle needs a new surface to handle the traffic that will come with this store coming to.
Definitely increase traffic by significance, I would imagine.
Yeah.
You have a question?
Nope.
Okay. I guess then, I see the existing site lighting to be upgraded as needed, so they'll, they'll address that at a future date when they see.
It's on their building plans.
Yeah, okay. And I think that's all the questions I had in terms of questions. An observation, and this is going to be, I'm going to make it now rather than in the public hearing because I don't want it to be construed as something we're requiring. I don't know how familiar the company that's doing this is with our area, but the summer months make it really hot. And those of us who've been there know the trees that have been put in are mostly bushes and have never grown, and they're not actually in front of where they're going to be. It might be worth considering at some future date, putting in some form of covered parking that around here has become popular because you also then generate your own solar energy from those parking, and there's plenty of that available in Taft. So if at some point they want to talk to you about that, I think that would be a good idea. But in no way am I asking that to be a part of this plan.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Unless there's any further questions from Mark, I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is now open, and anybody wishes to address the council, or pardon, the Planning Commission on this issue, please.
Try us.
Do so, or if the applicants would like to address the Planning Commission regarding their proposal. If any of you guys have any questions for them.
No, I'm fine. You seem to be saying everything what I want to say.
Yeah. And do you folks have any questions for the applicants?
You've covered them.
Nope, plans look good.
Okay. Good luck. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll need a motion to approve.
Motion?
Yeah, the same way we did it last time with that long drawn-out thing, so if you want to do it, it's fine. Okay, we're going to let.
Throw me on the bus.
So item two and three on there.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft Approving Site Plan Review Number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight and Conditional Use Permit Number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine for a thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-five square foot tenant improvement of an existing ninety-one thousand square foot former Kmart store into a new Tractor Supply Company retail store, including outdoor garden supply and outdoor display of product along the building entry sidewalk and outdoor display of product in the parking lot located on a seven point four seven acre parcel within the general commercial zone district at three oh one Gardner Field Road. Find that the project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act as set forth in section one five three oh one of the C E Q A guidelines existing facilities.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Yes.
And Chair Livingston?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill, and I'll follow up tomorrow with you.
Thank you very much, you all have a great evening.
Okay, let's see here. We are now down to item number nine, which is the planning director report.
Well, I hope everybody's been well, had a good Liberty Day weekend. Keep in mind, we'll be right back at it with the housing element come October, and I should have a completed document for all of you to look at, and hopefully I've begun or within that week begun the environmental part into November so we could at least get, start getting public comment on the draft completed report, or the element. I will make sure, now that it's starting to get a little messy, I'm getting towards the end of the document with all the strike through and underlines I provided to you. I'll make sure there's a clean copy if you prefer to just be looking how it would be finished, so it's more legible for the public and five of you when Mr. Orange joins us. So we'll be right back at it at our next meeting, and it'll probably be consecutive meetings aiming to try to get it approved and accepted in December, shipped off to the state for their review, and then there'll probably be some amendments or revisions in early twenty twenty-four that the state is recommending or back and forth conversations I have with them. So we'll, we'll be right back at it at our next meeting in October for the housing element.
Okay. That sounds good.
Actually, I'll say now, even though it's plenty early enough, the council last, last night was talking about different events going in town, and I'll just say plenty early for the Veterans Day event that we always have. It's on a Saturday this year, and the way it'll lay out as it's looking to lay out is that the typical event we have at the park will be, actually be on the tenth, the day before. And then the eleventh, the American Legion post is looking to do a downtown parade, much shorter length than our typical parades in downtown, but it will be starting from their store, go a couple blocks, and then just double back to the, to the post. But they're also having a car show that morning, so it's strictly more of a morning, early afternoon kind of event that's Saturday. So folks can either go to that, or folks are regulars of Bakersfield's large Veterans Day Parade, they could do that as well since we have our event at the park on the Friday, the tenth, as opposed to Saturday, the eleventh.
Okay.
So that's coming up as an event, and I'll just remind folks as we get closer in details, get squared away with the Legion. And that's it for my comments.
Okay, on to number ten, city attorney statements.
Thank you, no statement. Mr. Chair.
Any commissioner comments?
None from him.
I have one.
Yes?
Habitat for Humanity, you know, I'm a fan.
Yes.
I'm a Habitat for Humanity homeowner, and it was life-changing for me, and the, the project, which is located on Calvin and Third Street, they have broken ground, and they are getting ready to do their weekly building, so I would say probably sometime in the first of the year, there'll be a family in there. So it's going to be many opportunities to volunteer. I know that when my house was being built, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, the churches, the Lions Club were all Kiwanis, Kiwanis, I did mention Kiwanis, right? Were all involved in building my house, and it's, it's really something to live in a house that the community builds, because I think about that when I put up my Christmas lights, when I take them down, when I make sure that the outside looks good, because I know that when people drive by, they go, I, I worked on that house. And it's a gift. And so this is going to be a gift to one of, and now there's three families in the finalists. It's going to be a gift to that family and a gift to our community.
Yeah, I kind of noticed as I was driving by that they had done what a little bit of grading was necessary to do on a small lot. I was surprised the vehicle could get around. So yeah, it looks, looks like it's finally going to happen. It's been quite a while waiting for that, so I'm looking for that.
So to be able to volunteer, what do you do? Do you just show up, or do you go on their website?
You just show up. You can call, but I'm sure that they'll be advertising it, but there are multitudes of things that you could do. I was, I was in my fifties when my house was being built, so I wasn't going to climb up on the roof, but I hammered, hammered nails, I painted. I remember in July, I was in there finishing the cabinets, putting the finish, the final two or three coats of finish on the cabinets. There, even if it's just cleanup or bringing lunch for the volunteers, it's a pretty amazing opportunity to, to work together as a community.
I don't know about up here, when I was with Habitat down in San Diego, they also found opportunity to take advantage of people that had specific construction-related skills. So if there's a, if there's an opportunity there, maybe that would be something that they would have to tell us about, but certainly letting the Planning Commission know wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it sounds like a good opportunity for young women and men to go down there and learn something too, if they're got some spare time, go down there, lend a hand, learn a thing or two about construction, it never hurts, and.
Yeah. They say that Habitat for Humanity houses have more nails per square inch than any house. You learn how to use a hammer.
There's never a problem with a nailing pattern on that drywall.
Right.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And number twelve is the usual point where I volunteer to, to represent the Planning Commission to the city council unless somebody else wants to take that job.
You've been good at it.
Okay, so I will be attending the city council meeting to do that. We are now just needing a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.